Meeting called to order. Councilmember Buzz Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As to comply with the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 22nd, 2024, and posted on the bolted board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. To matters from the City Council, Councilmember Buzz Anderson.
Just a good evening to all of you and wishing you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes, I'd also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and to acknowledge all of the organizations and volunteers that help provide Thanksgiving meals for our residents. And as we get further into the holiday season, I want to remind everyone that the Asbury Park Toy Drive serves over 800 families and there are drop boxes around the city, including City Hall. So if you can donate a toy or some financial contributions, please consider it as we go into the holiday season.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Just a happy and safe Thanksgiving to you and your families.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Deputy.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Just the same thing, happy, healthy Thanksgiving holiday to all. If anybody's traveling, be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the Deputy City Manager? Matters from the sit-in for the City Attorney?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you. We're now onto a presentation by APW Developer LLC for a redevelopment project located at 1001 Ocean Avenue, 105 Third Avenue, and 105 Second Avenue.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving to all. My name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith, and we are here tonight on behalf of APW Redeveloper LLC, which is an affiliate of the master developer, Asbury Partners, for the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment area. Tonight's presentation concerns Block 4004, lots 1, 2, and 3, which is a lot that is bordered by Kingsley, Second, Third, and Ocean. As you'll hear tonight, the proposal concerns a two-phase project, with one phase having 44 townhomes and the other being a mixed-use building along Ocean Avenue. Our presentation tonight will start with John Barry, our planner, and then we'll move on to Lena Barone, Jeremy Green, and Frank Minervini, who will each go through and talk about the civil engineering and then the architecture. So we'll start with John.
Good evening, everyone. John Barry with Higher Grown Associates, professional planner. Nice to see you all. Happy Thanksgiving. So we'll start, just to get briefly oriented, we have the aerial exhibit here showing the location of the property as Jennifer described, fronting between Ocean Avenue and Kingsley Street and between Second and Third Avenues. The lot today is developed as a parking lot. Looking around the site, that's what you see. You can see a surface parking lot that has frontage on all four streets. The main access point from Third Avenue is seen in picture number eight in the top right corner, and then another access point on Second Avenue, picture number four. The surrounding properties include the Ocean Club, which is just to the north of the subject property. To the northwest, you've got the Surf House Building that's under construction. It's come along a bit since these pictures were taken over the summer. The opposite side of Ocean Avenue, in the top-left corner, you can see the Second Avenue Pavilion and the sidewalk along the frontage there. To the west of the property, at Kingsley and Third, you've got vacant, developable sites. And southwest of the subject property, you've got Porta. And just to the south of the block, you have the Stone Pony Site. A couple pictures of other buildings in the area that everybody's certainly very familiar with. These will be relevant in terms of some of the architectural discussion that we have presented later on, with the Paramount Theater Convention Hall building, with some of the features that may be echoed in the architecture you'll see later on. And then the Fifth Avenue Pavilion has examples of raised walkways that provide access, and we have similar, some dissimilar design features that we'll be discussing later on. So as far as the project that you'll hear about, we've got a subdivision to create two lots. The lot that'll be located along the Ocean Avenue frontage would have a mixed-use building with commercial space, as is recommended in the waterfront redevelopment plan, with some units upstairs. The remainder of the block will have a townhouse development that has a central spine access from Kingsley Street that'll provide access to the parking garages, the garages of the townhouse units. The plans that are being presented this evening comply in terms of the lot area, lot width requirements in the redevelopment plan. The height is proposed two feet, two stories, rather, for the mixed-use building with a penthouse, and then four stories for the townhouse buildings. Those heights comply with what's required and permitted in the redevelopment plan. So broadly speaking, we have a compliant application. There are some design exceptions that were noted in the technical review committee's report. I just want to bring attention to two items that we believe may not apply. There was a note about requiring landscaping for parking lot-planted islands and minimum parking lot-planted area. The parking that's proposed here is really driveways and garages. We don't have a parking lot with 20 or more spaces, which is what kicks those requirements into effect under the redevelopment plan. So we believe that those particular waivers don't apply to this application and would reserve the right to, when we present to the planning board, not have those considered.
Okay. That's it.
All right.
So with that, I'd like to move on to our civil engineer, Lena Barone.
Good evening. Thank you.
All right. Well, if you would introduce yourself for the record and then tell us a little bit about the existing conditions and some of the challenges with designing this site.
Yes, my name is Lena Bolauro de Barone. I'm a senior project manager for French and Barolo Associates, and I'm the engineer of record for this project. Just got my bearings, okay. So what I'm showing you is the site and layout plan that shows the proposed development. As you've heard from Mr. Barry, we have met with the city professionals before about this project that is the development of Block 4004. Currently, it consists of three lots. Those lots would be subdivided into two. One lot, Lot A, would have Building A on it, which is the mixed-use building fronting Ocean Avenue. Lot B would have the remainder of the property that fronts on Kingsley Street, as well as Second and Third Avenues. The proposed subdivision is a compliant subdivision. The lot areas and lot widths comply with what's required by the redevelopment plan. We are proposing 44 townhome units total in those two buildings, and three residential units in Building A, with approximately 4,413 square feet of retail space. The project will be developed in two phases. Phase one consists of the townhome development with a subdivision line near this parking lot. And then Phase Two, once the townhomes are completed, then the mixed-use building would be developed.
By phasing it that way, that allows for some of the construction phasing to occur on the site, correct?
That's correct. We are proposing a vehicular access off of Kingsley Street. This would provide access for parking for the townhomes, as well as access to the Building A garages, as well as two surface parking spaces. There would be cross-access easements for these two properties, and those would be recorded. As far as pedestrian circulation, access to Building A, to the retail building, we are proposing three points of access. You will see the architecture and how the ADA accessible ramps and stairs are configured, but there are three points of access along the frontage. Also, for Buildings B and C, the townhomes, we're proposing three points of access for each one of those buildings. We are proposing elevated walkways as a result of the new flood hazard rules that were adopted in 2023. The flood hazard elevation has been raised by three feet, so that was one of the challenges that we had to work through and come up with a design that meets the redevelopment standards, as well as the new flood hazard rules. So you will see in the architectural drawings later on that these access points provide sufficient interaction with the streetscape and provide for accessible access, as well as stairs. As far as parking for this development, we are required to provide 71 onsite parking spaces. We will be providing 98 off-street parking spaces, 88 for the use by the 44 townhomes, which is a combination of driveways and garage parking, 10 for the use by the mixed-use building, which has the three residential units. We will be providing EV parking for the townhomes and their garages, where all the units will be make-ready units. And we're also going to provide bicycle parking inside of the garages in the townhomes, and there will be racks inside the dwelling units in Building A. I also want to point out that as part of the reconfiguration of the access, because the existing site is a parking lot and has access points already, which we will be reconfiguring, we're going to increase the on-street parking by nine parking spaces. So there will be actually an increase in available on-street parking. Also, as far as utilities, we're proposing utility meters to be facing internally so that they will not be visible from the public roads.
Excellent.
So in summary, the project complies with the redevelopment bulk requirements from a site perspective. We exceed the onsite parking requirements and also create nine additional on-street parking spaces.
Great. So with that, I'd like to turn to architecture. We have two architects for the project, so I'll start with Jeremy Green, who will do the townhome architecture, and then we'll bring up Frank afterwards to talk about the
Good evening. Happy holidays. My name's Jeremy Green. I serve as a division architect of the New Jersey Homebuilding Operations Team, overseeing all the development work in the state. I'm a registered architect of New Jersey. Other way. Okay, great. I'll just pick up on what Engineer explained. So as you can see, we have two buildings on Second and Third Avenues, each having 22 dwelling units. They're essentially set up in 11 modules, so there's two dwelling, multifamily dwelling units per module. Both those units are accessed off the elevated walkway. There are ramps to the east and the west, and there's a stair generally in the middle to the elevated walkway. And as was explained, the walkway is elevated for flood compliance, as well as the lower-level units needing to be accessible. The units along Second and Third Avenue are three-story units with a loft and a roof terrace that overlooks the street. The units in the rear, they're four-story units with a roof terrace on the uppermost level that you see there. So the idea is that everybody gets a view, capitalizing on the location. The units are around 2,300, 2,400 square feet each, and as was mentioned, there are two parking spaces, one in the garage behind the alleyway and one in a parking spot off the alleyway. The buildings are nearly identical off of the two streets, as you can see, for Second and Third Avenue. We also have our alleyway architecture as well, which is compliant all around. You know, we don't change any materials, it's all the same materials on each side of the buildings, so that we have nice views to adjacent buildings. This is the elevation along Kingsley Street. This is our high visibility elevation, where we enter the site off of Kingsley, and we would have our signage demarking the buildings. I'm going to jump ahead just to show you. We have our material palette. Generally, it's a brick and a seven-titious panel of a variety of different configurations. And we had some nice renderings prepared for this presentation. This is the rendering showing you from Second and Kingsley, looking down past to the north, I believe. And that shows you along this area here, we have this elevated walkway, which you enter off of here. You have your fire service room. You have your elevator walkway, your stair down here, and as you can see, this is the rear adjacency to the Building A that will be spoken about next. And then we have one more rendering that we prepared, looking from the opposite corner, from Third along Kingsley, again, showing very similar configuration, changes in the color schemes, but generally, you can see the landscaping that's brought along the edge to soften up the street edge and that sort of thing.
Now, following the TRC meeting that we had back in August, you made some revisions to the plans. Can you briefly summarize some of those revisions?
So we were asked to enhance the elevation slightly. So along Second and Third Avenues, we did make some enhancements to the lower level, just lining them up based upon some of the feedback that we got from the planner, just to give them a little bit of a better balance. Along Kingsley, and I'll flip back to this one, because I think this is a little easier to see, we were asked to increase the percentage of fenestration, as well as the architectural detailing. So we actually had this bay just off of Second, Third Avenue, we actually had that turn the corner to create this, you know, nice element. We also added an additional bay here, as well as three windows, two at the lower level and one at the first floor, to increase the fenestration ratio along that side. Along the alleyway elevations, which I won't pan back to, we did actually add some trim features at the first and third level, as well as this paneled approach, as you can see, wraps now around the entire alleyway, which we thought was a nice enhancement. And then the elevations at the other end of the building pretty much did the same thing, that faced the rear of the mixed-unit building, as we did along Kingsley Avenue to a certain degree.
And then I know that obviously some of the sustainability features will come together once you have construction drawings, but what are some of the things you're thinking about as sustainability features for the townhomes?
Yeah, one of the unique things about the way our company builds is we have a truss and panel and fabrication plant in Morrisville, Pennsylvania, so we're able to capitalize on being able to panelize the walls, the floor systems, and bring those out with very little waste and very minimal transportation from Morrisville. So that really cuts down on the transportation, fuel impact, pollution, and the prefabrication, again, reduces the onsite waste and need for recycling and/or disposing of that, you know, that extra material. We also recently, about a year and a half ago, began doing all of our energy compliance in the state of New Jersey through the New Jersey Clean Energy Program, which is essentially Energy Star. So what that includes are high-efficiency windows, eco-friendly insulation, usually spray foam to reduce envelope leakage, high-efficiency heating and cooling systems, high-efficiency tankless water heaters, which are circulating features. And again, this cuts down on the energy consumption, high-efficiency Energy Star appliances and 100% LED lighting. By that account, generally, these homes deliver about 30% better energy efficiency than a traditional home.
Wonderful. That's all I have for Mr. Green. I would ask Mr. Minervini to come on up and talk about the mixed-use building along Ocean Avenue.
Can I ask questions on that one before we move to the other?
Oh, absolutely.
So take me through the color palette.
Okay.
And I don't love it, so I might start with that.
Okay, so generally, we have an earthier tone with grays and whites. So we're proposing two different brick colors along the base, as well as a series of different door colors to kind of give this playful rhythm along the street. This is something we proposed for the block on Cookman Avenue that we're currently developing, and that was an idea that came through from the previous TRCA interaction with that team, and we felt that we wanted to carry that theme over. Then we get into the rest of the siding materials, would be a mix of panelized and, you know, sorry, seven-titious panels, try to spit that one out, in a variety of different colors. We have cobblestone that comes down and mixes in with an Arctic white. We also have that Arctic white as your backdrop into the Hputer at the bays.
So this is going like around a ton of murals, just a sharp art palette on the boardwalk, right? There's all the pavilions have murals, the sewer plant. So, I mean, listen, on one boat, but that's very drab to me. I just think if you're going to plop this building in the middle of a sort of an artsy area, we could do something other than grays and whites. I like the brick, for what that's worth.
Yeah, it's a win. I'll take that. Okay, certainly something we can take into consideration. We usually don't go in with a wild scheme and...
But we like wild. You're in Asbury, pal. You gotta do a little wild.
Okay, it's great. Thank you for the feedback.
That's it.
Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Here's hoping. There we go.
Yeah.
All right. So Frank, I'd ask you to introduce yourself for the record and then tell us about the proposed building on Ocean Avenue.
Sure. I am Frank Minervini, principal of M&amp;M K Architecture. We design what we're calling Building A, which is the mixed-use two-story building along Ocean Avenue. So we'll start with our first sheet, and I think the architecture in this case is, in terms of aesthetics, as important as the building itself. So our building goes from Second Avenue to Third Avenue, the full 200-foot width and about 50 feet in depth. So in this dimension, it's 200 feet, in this dimension, about 50 feet. The ground floor, all of this section is retail use only. That's about 4,400 square feet of retail use.
When we say retail, we include any commercial.
Any commercial.
Could be restaurant as well.
Yeah, anything that is approved within the district. So we're prepared for, if it is a restaurant, the chefs and things like that, we'll be putting, but we'll see where the market takes us. The architecture itself, I think, is loosely inspired by, as are convention hall, and I think you could see that pretty clearly. When I say loosely, we certainly didn't want to replicate it, but we use certain elements of it. And one of the bigger elements, of course, is the color of the brick, which was revised since the TRC. Initially, this building had kind of a gray color to it, and after some feedback from the TRC, we decided to change it into a more reddish brown, which, again, is more typical you would see, certainly, and as we're in the convention hall. One of the bigger features in terms of architecture, again, this applies at a floor plan, is what we're calling a gallery. So as you've heard many, many times, all residential and commercial floors have to be raised up out of the footplane. In this case, it's about four feet. So the way we handled that in this case was to have an open gallery, which is, again, that same elevated walkway, but in our case, it's eight feet in width. So it allows for access to all this retail without having to be on the sidewalk. So it's not just a small little walkway that runs adjacent to the retail, it's something much more significant, and I think works architecturally. Of course, we have ADA access compliance here, stair entry here, stair entry here, and stair entry on the northern side. So there is multiple points of access to this gallery. The second floor, and I can go through the floor plans if needed, but the second floor, here's some more renderings, I think it's probably important to talk about this. So here's a view looking southwest. You'll see that that same architecture wrapped around both of the sides, the smaller façades, which this is about 50 feet. Here's how we envision the buildings to look in the evening, lighting along these columns, and there's a straight-on view in the evening. Ground floor plan, this is Ocean Avenue, this is the sidewalk, and this is that raised walkway, which we're calling a gallery, as I mentioned a couple times. So this is important because it allows access to several points within this retail space. We're not sure yet if this will be one single retail space or two. We're showing that as two. I think we'd like that option, but we'd also like the option for it to be one end user, depending on who that end user is. So to access this, as I mentioned, there's a stair here on the southern side, there's two stairs here directly center of the building, and again, on the northern side. One of the significant changes we made since the TRC, and I'll go back to the rendering, was that there was a comment about the asymmetry of the building. And initially, we had this section not exactly centered, and that was purposeful. We thought it made it a bit more visually interesting. But we understood the comments, made the revision, and ultimately liked where we wound And then finally, on the second floor, again, this building's only two stories, it's got the second floor has three residential units, about 2,200 square feet plus or minus, three units. And then there is a penthouse for each of those units with outdoor terrace that faces east, obviously the views. So these three boxes are habitable space, but they are very small, wouldn't count as a floor, even though we are allowed four floors here. So I think that's it. Oh, green elements, important to this building, important to almost all the buildings, all the buildings that we do these days. And our construction method is different from the townhomes you heard about, but we, at this point, we know for sure that we'll be using, you've heard this many times again, Energy Star-rated appliances, windows, closed-cell insulation, which superinsulates the walls. We haven't talked much about the stormwater detention, but that is a big green factor. I think we don't talk about it because we're also used to it in Asbury. It's part of all the development. Low VOC paints and LED lighting. So those are the ones that we have, that we know for sure at this point. There certainly will be more, but I think just given that, we meet, far exceed the thresholds that the construction will require.
Excellent.
And I think that's it.
This is square footage of the three penthouses.
The penthouses themselves are 700.
Seven, thank you.
Yeah. Each, sorry, not total.
Yeah, we have the little versions, so I can't read.
Yeah.
I think that's really interesting. It looks a little like the post office.
Yeah, and that's why I said loosely, because I recognize that it's got several elements that could be applied to other buildings.
Well, that is all we have for our direct presentation. Obviously, everyone's here to answer questions. I will note that for this project, in a little bit different fashion, we are asking for two subsequent developer agreements, one for each building, so that we can understand the phasing that the townhomes go first, so the construction can be phased in the area where the second building or third building would be built, and then the Ocean Ave building would be built. They all could be tied together, and we think that will reduce disruption as well by doing some of the construction phasing on the site. That's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from any of us?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to public participation. May the most open meeting to the public.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and full address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, Matthew Whalen, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, 1011 Main Street. I just wanted to first wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and then just remind everyone that we're doing the window decorating contest all over town for businesses. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion, open meeting to the public?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and full address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, Matthew Whalen, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, 1011 Main Street. I just want to first wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and then just remind everyone that we're doing the window decorating contest all over town for businesses. We've had a great response. We've got 20 businesses signed up already, but we have a lot more businesses in Asbury Park, and I want to get as many in as possible. I'd like to thank the city for distributing that as well. Sylvia Sylvia sent that out to the city's list of businesses as well to help get the word out, and that also got me a few more to sign up. So it's looking really good. We got a lot of businesses downtown participating. I'd like to see more on the west side and Main Street. The boardwalk has challenges because of the filming going on, and I talked with them about it, but they're going to try and see if there's a way that they can work around it to participate as well. But I just, it'd be really good to get Asbury as bright and cheerful for the holidays as possible. So that's the goal here. Any business that wants to sign up, it's really easy. Just call the chamber office, 732-775-7676, or email me at info@asburyparkchamber.com and just say, "We want to participate." There's nothing more. I don't need any more information than the business name, and that's your it. So that's it. And again, happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Didn't see anyone.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive and regular meeting minutes of November 13, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2024-493 through 2024-495. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Our resolution 2024-496, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Purchase order number 24-03232 is removed from the bill list. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2024-497, resolution authorizing payment for emergency traffic signal repairs needed at Cookman Avenue and Heck Street.
Move it.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-498, resolution authorizing fiber cable installation at the new fire department headquarters.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-499, resolution authorizing a professional services contract with T&amp;M Associates for design contract administration and inspection of traffic signal installation at Grand and Sunset Avenues.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. I had a question, but I'll make it more of a statement. My foot bad, I didn't follow up on it. Talked to Jason from T&amp;M, and I was a little bit disappointed in the prices, and he said he was going to try to get them down. Did we hear anything from him? On this project alone? No, not on this one. So I do remember the conversation. I thought it was for future projects, but I believe that's the bill, sir.
Do you want to table it?
I can double check, but...
Do you want to table it?
I don't know. It's a bad intersection. Two weeks.
Are you moved to table? What's two weeks? Yeah. Moved to table. Is there a second to table? Thank you. So to table 2024-499, Councilmember Bez Anderson. To table to the December 11th meeting.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-499, table to the December 11th meeting. Thank you. Resolution 2024-500, resolution authorizing a contract for the disposal of leaves during the fall season.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have an additional resolution to tonight's agenda. It's a resolution 2024-490, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into a redevelopment agreement with 614 Cookman LLC for a project and the property located at 614 Cookman Avenue, identified on the city tax map as Block 2404, Lot 6. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Okay. We're now on to adjournments. Does anyone have anything else?
Yes, that's our intention. That's a present.
Get a second. Second adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody can have tomorrow all.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.